All right, I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:02. As the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Newton, New Hampshire, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe or listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are utilizing free conference call for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, (978) 990-5000, Meeting ID number 631111. We previously gave the notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the conference call via phone. If anyone has a problem, please email BOSSecretary@newtonnh.net. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Diane, could you give us the lineup who we have on tonight?
Sure, we have Pete, Jack, Chief Alcanino, Chief Jewitt, Larry, Trish, Teri, Tina, Nancy, yourself, Bob Zelinski, Lisa Gonya, and Kate is now on, and Ron. I'm going to screw up your name, Ron, I apologize. Governor, Governor, anyway, she's a member of the public.
Awesome. Trish McCarthy, we'll turn it over to you if you could give us your update.
Absolutely. Okay, so I have seven calls to report since we last spoke. The updated numbers, however, instead of telling you the numbers every single day since we last spoke, I'm just going to give you today's total and the difference between the last time I gave you these numbers. So we have 3,596 positive cases in New Hampshire, that's up 297. We have 1,268 recovered, that's up 34, that's good. Unfortunately, we have 172 deaths since we last spoke, that's up 30. We have 359 hospitalizations, out of that, 114 are permanent. Now, I'm going to, so that's our numbers as of today. Now I'm going to go back to the beginning of the call, so Thursday. Just to let you know, we have 61 million more federal money to be put towards testing in New Hampshire. We also, Health and Human Services, so our Health, our State Health Department talked about our warehouses have many supplies and they're working very hard to try to distribute all the supplies. They also said that on Thursday, they tested 2,000 people and are hoping to keep their numbers as high every day. So as a reminder, remember if we test more, our numbers could be more. So they're saying although the test results could be higher, the percentage of COVID is less, so that's a good thing. Military support, they're still assisting at test sites and also where our PPEs are, they're still having some issues with that, so the military along with the National Guard are pitching in to take care of it. Our Joint Information Command talked about the social trends and online trends, and they're saying that there's a lot of talk about opening hair salons, there's a lot of talk about the state economy, obviously. PPEs supply, it's a big issue in long-term care facilities and they're working on that. It's also an issue with getting to the locals, to our first responders. So even though we have a lot of PPEs that might be landing at the airport, much of it is, I don't want to say confiscated, but you know, up the food chain, the feds get it before we get it. So we may think we've ordered enough, and next thing you know, we don't get what we thought we were going to get. They reminded us on the Safety Wellness Committee to make sure that hand washing and social distancing is something that's in the forefront, that we're always reminding people. I did send out some potential signs about hand washing and social distancing. I think I sent it to the Selectmen and maybe the two Chiefs, Nancy and Diane. Fire Academy opened up their gates, and they're allowing anyone working in the EOC to walk the loop of their training area. So that's a good thing because up till now, they've been confined to the building. Our Director Harper, she sent out an email addressing the state agency needs for supplies about hand sanitizers. As much as we're getting when we order things, hand sanitizers are still an issue. On Friday, we had a few things that are repetitive, so I won't go over that. I will mention that the troopers are continuing to assist in the distribution of the PPE to all the sites. Planning directed patrols for the seacoast and mountain trailheads over the weekend. They cautioned that any towns that had trails, to make sure they do get patrolled or monitored in some fashion. They were going to monitor a rally that was up in Concord that was going to take place on Saturday. They said as of, so this is Friday, as of 5:30 PM on Friday, the Wildcat Transit Servicing in UNH, Durham, Dover, and Portsmouth will all be suspending all operations. They said service is anticipated to resume sometime around August 31st. Right now, there's no changes in the rail or aviation, although much of our, many of our planes coming out of Portsmouth and Manchester are on limited flight. There was conversation about continuing in the reopening of New Hampshire. Huge amount of coverage that is required for Hampton Beach, they're still concerned about that. There's mixed opinions, this is interesting, in the social media end of things, on whether or not masks should be required. And then they talked, the national media is focused on the economy and obviously budgets. There's a lot of grants, we had a grant call on Thursday that Larry and I, and I think Nancy and maybe Diane, and maybe the Chiefs were in on, it was amazing. There was so much information. And then they also said that if we have issues with acquiring disinfectant, they sent us a form that they want us to fill out and send to the agencies to report gaps or issues in whatever it is we're ordering. And then the second call we had on Friday, I think I also shared this flyer with the Selectmen. So Matt Broadhead from the AG's office, there's a few things here, I'm going to read this part. "The reopening of restaurants potentially implicate, sorry, complicate several areas regarding enforcement, including one of the Governor's order, liquor enforcement, enforcement of local and health and safety codes and ordinances. Each of these three categories have different mechanisms for enforcement." They went on to say, "The Governor's Stay-at-Home 2.0 Order, Emergency Order Number 40", which again, you have access to on the EMD website, on the town's site, "delegates enforcement responsibility to the Department of Health, to the state, and to the local law enforcement. The Liquor Commission regulates the service of alcoholic beverages. And then local health and safety ordinances and certain state laws, such as places of assembly, according to RSA 155, are still applicable and can be enforced by the appropriate local officials, could be health, could be fire, could be police, could be the EOC, it just could be our ordinances." They said, "Although the Stay-at-Home Order 2.0 and subsequent guidance issued by the Governor's reopening task force to signify relaxing of some of the previous restrictions, the overall objective remains unchanged. Our enforcement objectives remain set forth according to the March 27th Law Enforcement Memorandum, which Chief Jewitt, you know, has in his possession and was involved in all the calls. Law enforcement is encouraged to work with the public and the businesses, to educate them and seek voluntary compliance. If local police receive a notice of a violation of one of the emergency orders, they do have the authority to respond. An officer should visit the business, provide a copy of the applicable Governor's order, and issue a verbal warning as to the consequences of continued or repeated violations. Persistent violations should result in a written warning from the local police. According to the March 27th Law Enforcement Memo, police should notify the AG's office of any written warning by calling, and I'm sure Chief Jewitt has this number, 931-9975." They went on to say, "If there's any violations after a written warning is issued, again, get ahold of the AG's office. Potential consequences for violations of an emergency order include referral to the AG's office, which may seek a civil enforcement action to require compliance, or in fact, close a business, or if appropriate, the Liquor Commission could do enforcement action. Additionally, a violation of the Governor's order is a misdemeanor for which a business could result in a fine of up to $20,000 per violation." So that's pretty interesting. We've talked about it in our various meetings, but that's verbatim what was said on that call on Friday. There was also an update on yard sales and craft fairs. They said that after the task force received many inquiries, they, the reopening task force and Governor relaxed the requirements for yard sales and craft fairs. These are now permitted and are expected to follow universal guidelines, which does mean social distancing and masks. They also asked again about, and you've heard this before, recreational camps, are they allowed to open? And the task force said they're going to be addressing this this week, and again, they'll let us know. There was another EMD that said, "Has the task force considered, sorry, my tongue is getting in the way, has the task force considered opening libraries or allowing Memorial Day events?" And the answer is, "The libraries must follow the universal guidance, and Teri, if you don't know where that is, call me tomorrow, I'll get it to you. And parades are not allowed at this point in time." And that's as of Friday, I'll give you an update. There was also a comment about can outdoor entertainment take place? There's a lot of talk now about restaurants with outside seating, and the question was, can they also have outdoor entertainment? And the answer is, outdoor entertainment has been an issue, they're working on it to resolve, and if you've got a specific one you want to talk about, call them, and on a case-by-case basis, they'll help us through it. There was also a question on, about elections and changing your party affiliation. So the question was, "Most likely, some people may want to register or change party affiliation in person. Do you, meaning the state, have any particular practical recommendations on how we're supposed to do that as a town? Is it appropriate to order PPEs for the supervisor of the checklist? Does this present any concern with follow-up if one of us..." And what would the workman's comp coverage be? The answer is, "We will reach out to you offline, we'll work through some of those questions with the Attorney General, election attorney, and discuss on a future call or publish something for everyone, and it may actually come up in our legal call tomorrow." And then another question was, "Where do we stand on private summer camps?", and the task force is addressing it, and that's going to be talked about this week, so I'm sure we'll get more on that. Then on Saturday, so that was Friday, on Saturday, 595 million in CARES Act expenditures was announced. Yard sales, as I mentioned, and craft fairs are now permitted. And there was also, Department of Health said they were working on a list sent from Representative Sherman, his, regarding the long-term care, and gave ideas of what they need and how we will, we are working through the system for them. So imagine they'll get back to us on that. They also said 800 people scheduled or tested throughout the state of New Hampshire, that was on Saturday. Military support, they're still working with operations at the food banks, and also, they ended up getting a call to help at the food distribution site in Plymouth. Now, here's the flyer that I sent out to the Selectmen and the Chiefs, and I'm going to read this, and then I'll comment on the flyer. "So the United States Secret Service has received reporting of a well-organized Nigerian fraud ring exploiting the COVID-19 crisis to commit large-scale fraud against state unemployment insurance programs." Like, we need another thing we've got to handle, right? "This fraud network is believed to consist of hundreds, if not thousands, of mules with potential losses in the hundreds of millions of dollars. The banks targeted have all been at levels including local banks, credit unions, and large national banks. The state EOC liaison and the local financial institutions are notified to identify the mules and potential seizures." So the flyer that I sent out, and maybe Diane can send it out to all of our, all of our people in town, and maybe we should actually post it on our website, but it did talk about that this well-organized Nigerian fraud ring. It said, "In the state of Washington, individuals residing out of state receiving multiple deposits from the state of Washington Unemployment Benefit Program, all in different individuals' names with no connection to the account holder. A substantial amount of the fraudulent benefits submitted have been used for first responders, government personnel, and school employees. It's assumed the fraud ring behind this possesses a substantial database to submit the volume of applications that thus far have been observed." So Diane and I can post it on the website, but if you hear anyone talking about it, you know, in your travels, you might want to maybe refer them to our town website so they understand, because there is an email that they can contact if you've got any suspicious activity going on. All right, that was Saturday. Sunday, I know, isn't that amazing? Unbelievable. Sunday, again, we're continuing to source our PPEs, and they're establishing more warehouse space just because they need places to store the PPEs that are coming in, in order to distribute it according to what we're posting on our web EOC. They're reminding us to post on the web EOC because that's how they'll prioritize who gets what. They also said the National Guard and public health is continuing to work on mobile testing, which is a plus, obviously, for us. They said the military support, 750 families receive food donations on Sunday, and they're continuing to assist wherever they need, the military's going wherever they need to be. They also commented on search and rescue missions, unfortunately, on Sunday, more people, obviously, in trails, they're going hiking, two injured hikers and one lost person. Would be nice if they said they ever found the lost person, but they didn't tell me that. Also on Saturday, they conducted more patrols in the seacoast and trails, and they're going to continue this as the weather gets warmer. They really believe as people are staying home, this is going to be an issue, which again, is somewhat of a concern because now when people are getting hurt, our first responders are responding to that, and sometimes then they're transported to a hospital and it's taking first responders away from people that may need help with COVID. So again, they're saying, you know, be cautious, don't be stupid. Well, I added the stupid part. They also said there's no issue at the food bank on Sunday, and no law enforcement actions were taken at the rally in Concord that was held on Saturday. So that was good. On Monday, let's see, that's today, yes. Okay, so they said a few things. They're still working on our PPEs, they are expecting a really large order actually coming in tonight, and they're preparing, the military is preparing to assist with it and get it to the distribution centers, the warehouses and whatever. Military support is also assisting with cyber issues and call center operations. They also said the operations section is working with Manchester and FedEx, the airport and FedEx to prepare for the shipment of the PPEs that are coming in later tonight. As far as our first responders go, we have 22 first responders that have tested positive for COVID, increased to 37 tracked and quarantined. 19 are fire, 16 are police, and two are EMS. And we have 40 first responders in alternative housing. They also said they've conducted direct patrols at the seacoast over the weekend, a lot of heavy traffic. But for the most part, everything was being adhered to, and they really had no major issues to report. They're now working on getting cameras to meet video needs during this pandemic. There's places where they think they need cameras, probably the distribution sites are the most important places, so they're, they're working on that, this is a new issue now. They're reminding us to track expenses as we listen to the call, the grant call, we've already got our expenses right where they need to be, and we're about ready to submit, and at the end of this little call, I'll talk about what I need from everyone, or what Larry needs, I shouldn't say me. Local trends, we're talking about COVID-19 members, we're focused on that, and what these people, how they were, they got COVID, how were they, what was their contact and their tracing? They talked about the outdoor table service at restaurants, and there was a lot, local social media, a lot of mixed reactions about the seacoast and what's happening up there. To continue for this Monday call, we talked about high school graduations, they wanted to know, a particular town asked if there's going to be more definitive guidance coming out on what the school districts are really supposed to do, what are we allowed to do? And the answer, unfortunately, you've heard this before, not sure that further guidance is coming out, it's on a case-by-case basis. Any questions about what can and can't be done have to be directed to Chris Bond at DOE, and Chris is actually the one who responded about our parade, but I'll get to that at the end. If you want to create a plan to help review, Chris can help you with that, and there'll be no formal approval needed, but you just have to run it by him. It's basically the same with the Memorial Day Parade. Outdoor dining, it is the intention to open establishments that serve food and alcohol, this was a question, or are we just talking about food? And you've heard this before, this person must have not been paying attention, and they said all of these can open. Any, any part of the Liquor Commission or inspected by a health inspector that is a restaurant serving alcohol is allowed to open. It's just for outside dining, however. They still have to follow social distancing, six feet between the tables. There was another EMD that asked, "Is there a way to do an analysis of effective transmission rate in New Hampshire?" He said that the 3,396 seems high, and with additional information, awesome testing numbers coming in, so the number will increase even if the rate of transmission is going down. And their answer was, "There is a lot of factors that come into play with this data. The percentage has been going down, but again, it depends on who's being tested." Their example is, "When testing large numbers at a long-term care facility, the percent positive is skewed." We will pose this question to the public health and see if there's another way to put this information together." So they're really good about working with us when we do have a question. Also about the stipend, there was a question from Fire Chief, we thought there was going to be a form for firefighters to fill out as to their intent to respond to calls, and the answer is, "Yes, this link, we'll send it to you, and the fire department, they'll post it on the website, Fire Department, First Respondents Police Department can fill it out, and it's only for volunteer and part-time departments." It basically says that if you didn't happen to work in the eight weeks and two days that the stipend is formed, this form gets filled out just saying that you were available, you could have worked. So it's basically in place of a payroll, so this is how we back everything up. There was another question, "When ordering PPEs, they said, 'I expect it to be safe for my employees, and yet I haven't gotten adequate PPEs from the state, or for that matter, anywhere else.' We are asked, meaning we, this town, are asked to vet it ourselves, which has been national advice to states, and now it's passed down to us." So his example was, "They received KN-95 masks that were not fitted and not comparable to the N95s, so they can be used as surgical masks, but not in close prolonged contact with COVID patients." He also commented that the gowns that he ordered when they arrived, they had no sleeves to cover the arms. So the answer was, "The KN-95s are under emergency authorization use. The CDC has signed off on them, however, it's not for prolonged contact with a COVID patient." When it comes to gowns, they said, "We went through, we went weeks without any gowns, and now we finally got some, when we sent them out, now we're finding out that they didn't have arms." So they're asking us to send more requests if we ended up with the batch that didn't have arms. They said, "We don't have N95s to send out, but we can send some KN-95s, but again, they are not to be used in a hospital setting or for direct contact with a COVID patient." They also said, "Our supply chain is beginning to catch up, we have some stuff coming in, and there's still N95s on order, it's still fragile, but we're doing the best that they can." They did say municipalities are buying their own equipment, and if you're vetting it themselves, that's great if you're getting what you ordered. They also talked about EMS exposure guidance, and they said, "How were these guidelines developed?" And the answer was, "If you look at the CDC website, you'll find, relative to definition of prolonged exposure, it is unclear because it has changed, but CDC website does have a couple of definitions. We went within six feet for 10 minutes because this seemed to be the most definitive." And they also said, "If there's respiratory secretions, you are on a high-risk situation, then the caveat is where, that completely go out the window with the time, so forget the 10 minutes." We also asked, there was a question, "Is restaurant staff required to wear gloves and masks?", and the answer is, "They need to wear a mask, but are not required to wear gloves." And then Attorney General said, "The year-end graduation and scheduled gatherings, these are exempted from the emergency order that prohibits gatherings of 10 or more, however, social distancing still has to be adhered to." And Matt Broadhead from the AG's office, and again, Christopher from DOE, is, I talked to them multiple times today about the parade, as did Larry. Actually, at quarter to six tonight, Christopher sent me an email, and he's going to call me at 11:00 tomorrow about the parade. So Matt and I did talk about this today along with Larry, we'll see what he says tomorrow. And that's it for my reports, except if I could add, for all the department heads that are on the call, and thank you Diane for sending out that email, Larry and I have to get all our invoices in, everything that, any invoices that you have, and for those of you that have already started calling, I need to know what department it was for, so, or why, and I'm going to use me as an example, although I didn't do this, but let's pretend I did. As the Conservation Secretary, and I can't work at Town Hall, let's say I had to work at home and I need to use my printer, so if I ordered ink on the bill that would come in, it should say COVID, due to COVID... Due to COVID buildings closed, working at home, home printer. So that Larry and I can completely explain, when we get audited, why we did this. So I may be calling you if there's an ex, if I'm missing an explanation as to who did what. But again, we've got this week, I need everything by Friday, right Larry? I think Friday we need it? I think Friday.
Yes, Friday, Friday we're gonna submit the first, first quarter.
Okay. And then the last thing I have, which really isn't about this, but it does pertain to both chiefs. We've got some birds behind the fire station. And I just want you to know, in one of my other lives, I was a Fish and Wildlife Officer. So when the Fire Chief mentioned it, that you were looking for a Department of the Interior Fish and Wildlife Officer to come check out the birds. He didn't know that that's what I was at one time. I did go out and look at them. They're not piping plovers. They're killdeer. They are not protected or endangered. So whatever you need to do, you're good to go.
Terry, thank you. I'll open up the station tomorrow.
Thank you. Much as I love animals.
Yep. They're not endangered.
Awesome. Well Trish, thank you for the update, a lot of info there. So, one thing I did want to jump off of her stuff on, and hopefully we can just spend a few minutes on this, is I had a call from a resident this weekend who kinda reminded me, and maybe everybody else on this call can back me up. But we never had specific direction to the residence as to the town beach. And I think that was because when we were closing everything, it was so darn cold that we never even thought about the town beach. I believe we might have police taped off the parking lot. But now that we're getting into the nice weather, my question is, what are we doing about the town beach? What does the board wanna do?
Good question. I mean, we obviously don't want it crowded with people closer than six feet together.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll just run a couple of things by you. First of all, the governor said today that the state beaches are going to be, the goal is to open state beaches June first, but it's a goal, not a, not a hard date. They have a task force looking at that. If we look at Florida, Florida has spent a lot of time policing their beach. You know, they have guidelines and stuff, so they had to, they've had to have police officers over there telling people to move along or not get into groups. Massachusetts is opening their beaches, which Massachusetts beaches are typically under local control. So municipalities are, are opening most of those beaches on Monday. So I think New Hampshire's gonna kind of observe what happens on Monday. But I guess all of this, throwing a couple of things out there, do we want to close the town beach and see what happens on June first? Or do we want to keep the beach open and worry about having more patrols over there to talk to people, is essentially what's on the table.
I'm for June one wait. Kate here.
Larry, Lisa, where are you guys?
Now, I, I don't think it's gonna be an issue because it's still early in the season. You're not gonna get a bunch of swimmers down there. So it can either stay open or you can wait to June first, it doesn't matter really.
Yeah, the one thing you're not gonna see is people wearing masks if they're hopping in the lake. Just remember, this weekend is Memorial Day weekend, right?
Yep.
So they'll be having cookouts and stuff.
Yeah, that's, my thing is not so much the water. I mean, people can get in the water anywhere on that lake. My thing is the town beach. So we had a seventy-one degree day yesterday. Are we going to allow people to, if we have another one of those weekend days, go down there with a hibachi grill or whatever, in a cooler, and with their families? And, you know, hang out there all day?
My opinion is, it, it, as long as, as town public buildings are closed, then so should be the town beach and the parks and everything else. I think as we open things up, we should open everything up, not just the public. You know, a public area open should be a public area open. All public areas should be open.
Do you wanna turn that into a motion, Lisa?
Alright, so I would move to officially close the beach due to the pandemic to be revisited on June first.
Anybody want a second? Kate's a second.
Second says Kate.
Uh, discussion? Anybody? Alright, so the only thing Lisa, I would suggest is, you said the beach, let's just call it the town beach, right? So we're clear.
Yes. I, I accept that friendly amendment to include the word town before beach.
Yep. And I'm gonna call for a vote now. Larry, how do you vote?
No.
Uh, Lisa?
Aye.
Uh, Kate?
Aye.
Matt's an aye.
This is simply revisiting, not opening.
Yeah, exactly. So we need to get, I'm sure Diane, you can help us out with a, we need to get a notice out on the website. So people have plenty of notice.
Yeah, and we're only talking two weeks here.
Yeah, maybe, yeah. And quick question. Yeah, hold on Nancy. Quick question, is Chief Jewett on?
Yes, he is, yes, he was.
Hi, yeah, I'm still here.
Okay, great. Now, did we end up taping that parking lot, police taping?
Uh, we taped it a good while back. I can slide down tomorrow, make sure it's still up. And if not, we'll redo it.
Great, thank you. Nancy, you had something?
Yeah, I was talking to Tony the other day. He wanted to know if the board wants him to go down, start raking and getting the branches and stuff up. Cause he would like to work if you, well, let him do that.
I actually think that's a good idea. Because when we do open the beach, we do want it clear, clean.
Yep. Uh, Kate, how do you feel about that?
Wait, sorry, I was muted. Yes, good idea.
Larry, is that a good idea, do you think?
Yep, that's mine.
Awesome, so Nancy, that's everybody. Tony can go ahead.
And the other question is, are you expecting Sam in the near future? Because he's willing to help with that as well.
Uh, I will let you know tomorrow. I don't think we are though, but tonight we'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Alright, anything else COVID-19 related?
Pete, did you have something to talk to the board?
Yep, I, I was just unmuting myself. Pete here, transfer station. So over the weekend, we did kind of like a soft opening, taking cash and check again to the Newton residence. And it worked out perfect. I did it myself, I was up there. I had my mask on when interacting with people. I never touched the cash or the check. I had them put it in the bucket. And I left their receipt there so they can grab. It seemed to work out really good.
Great.
Okay, perfect.
In which case, I, I would like to make a motion to allow the transfer station to start accepting bulk items again from residents.
Is that just Newton residents?
Yes, for now.
Okay.
Get a second on that?
Second.
Alright, Pete, is that?
He still won't have to handle cash still, right? We do this?
Correct, I am not giving out change.
Okay, I just wanna make sure you guys are okay. Okay, if you're okay with it.
Yeah, this is utilizing the method that he did a trial around this past weekend. That's the method he will use in order to do so. But this way, the public will know, you know, the town residents will know they can start bringing bulk items to the transfer station again. And that's my goal.
Okay.
Yep. Alright, let's call for a vote. Larry, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye. So definitely get that notice out there. And I would still, not that I wanna solve it here on the phone, but I still strongly encourage us how to figure out how to take credit cards down there. There's a gentleman selling hot dogs and icy pops across from Town Hall. He's taking credit cards. A lot of people are gonna drive by that on their way to the transfer station and the transfer station is gonna say they don't take credit cards. I don't know what he's doing, but it's, what is this here, 2020? We should figure out a way to take credit cards. If, if it's financially not feasible, we need to see the numbers. Does the rest of the board agree with me?
Yes, I do agree. We may have to revise the rates a little bit in order to cover the expense.
I think so.
But I do think that we should have that capability as well. And we can take a lesson from the tax collector as to how she got her set up.
Yep. And keep in mind, we're looking to, I might be the only one. Hopefully I'm not, but I think we need to use these things as opportunities to move forward. Move the town forward.
Yes.
And this could be an opportunity. Let's not let it go. Okay, so Pete, thank you for that. Was that it on that?
That's it for that.
Okay. Did you have something else?
Um, people are very excited to know when the swap pile is gonna be opening back. That's the talk of the transfer station. So I, I, I'm telling everybody that's still gonna be waiting, but, um, I mean, we might wanna think about that too.
What's the board think of that? I, I would think that would be something we wanna wait on. You know what we're talking about, right?
Yeah, there's a lot of contact and touching stuff.
Yeah.
Well, it's basically residents dropping things off and other residents picking it up. And unless we were prepared to have the residents drop off items in one location so it could sit for the forty-eight hours or seventy-two hours, however long it needs to sit, before it's available to be taken back out again, then I, I think we should hold off on it entirely. And we can again revisit that when we revisit opening the beach.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah. Alright, good. So Pete, stay tuned, I guess.
Copy that.
We're gonna know a lot more in a couple day, in a couple weeks, obviously, while going.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, anything else COVID-19 related?
You just have, you have just your minutes from, if nobody else has anything, minutes? Public minutes from May eleventh and May thirteenth.
I move to accept the public minutes from May eleventh and May thirteenth as written.
Get a second on that?
Second.
Second.
Second, Larry? Alright, let's go around. Kate, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Larry?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye. So that's unanimous. So, anything else on the agenda tonight for this meeting?
I do not have anything else.
Awesome. Alright. I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Alright, so, uh, is there a second on that?
Second.
Wanna remind everybody that tomorrow night's regularly scheduled selectmen's meeting is going to be via Zoom. So it's going to be an experiment. But we will give it a shot. So that's, uh, for us people on the board, we have to make sure we, uh, wear our nicest clothes because the public's gonna see us for the first time in three months or whatever.
Right, no pajamas.
No PJs.
No, they won't see you.
Yeah, just from the top up, no PJs.
They'll, they'll see us if we're on Zoom, if they're on Zoom.
Right, from the waist up.
No, they won't, they won't see you. All they can do is listen and, uh, they only have.
No, they can, they can get on Zoom though.
I don't think so because we put a passcode in and we do not publish the passcode. This is how they do it at the, this is how they do it at the.
Who put the passcode on?
So I talked with the Gordon Spots from, uh, Sanborn.
Yeah, but Diane, right, right. But Diane, I set up the meeting last week and I deliberately did not put a passcode on the meeting.
Okay.
So the meeting is set up, so if people want to, they can come on and join Zoom. I, at least this go around, it's on my account, so if I see somebody coming in, I can, I'll know who's coming in. Cause I have to click on everybody to, to let them come in.
Okay, so then I'll have to go in and modify it then because I put the passcode on, so it would just be you guys on.
What did you modify?
Your, that, that scheduled meeting.
Oh, okay, yeah, don't do that.
Well, I, I.
Put it the way it was.
You had mentioned to talk to them, you know, at the, at the school, so I did. And that's what they say they do.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know why they would do that. They must say something in their announcement at the beginning of the meeting because technically that's not, um, letting the public participate via Zoom, but.
Right.
Well, they can, they can, they only use the phone to call in through Zoom.
Yeah, I think where I'm going with it and the board can, I mean, tomorrow night's an experiment, but the board can, can tell me if I'm wrong here. But I think I wanna get away from this phone number because we get a lot of echo, we get feedback, we've got delays. And, um, you know, obviously in Zoom, you can go audio only. We worked that out. Diane worked that out for us. But I think I wanna try to abandon the phone. But that's where, that's where I'm coming from. But, uh, we'll see what happens tomorrow night, so.
No, and I agree with you. I use Microsoft Teams in my day job. And I don't have my video on for it, but some do.
Yep.
And you have the ability to mute all. I mean, we can have it so that the public can participate by chat versus, you know, or Q and A versus actually being able to jump in the audio so that we can control the public's participation as far as, you know, so they don't interrupt the regular meeting. And when we're ready to open it up to them, we can, for the public comment.
Yeah. So after we go through tomorrow night, towards the end of the meeting, we'll, uh, we'll save some time for what we liked, what we didn't like, etc.
Okay, how we adjust the meeting?
Alright, thank you. Alright, so we did have a motion and a second, so I think we're good to go. So everybody have a nice evening and we'll see everybody, or most everybody, tomorrow night. Thanks, everybody.